Good morning, good morning, good morning. God bless you. We thank God for each and every one of you out there. This is Pastor Ladina J. Smith from the New Mount Oliver Baptist Church, 4412 Washington Boulevard, Wilmington, Delaware. And we greet you with Jesus' joy, because the joy of the Lord is our strength. Good morning. We are asking that you remember to pray for those that are still, those that have had surgery, those that are in surgery right now, those people that are still grieving for family members that they have lost for various reasons. And let's pray for our world as we know it, because we know that we are in troubled times, and therefore, we need to be constantly in prayer to the God of our salvation for healing, for cleansing, for deliverance, for restoration, because only our God is able to do exceedingly, above and abundantly anything we think or ask. God bless you today. As we bow our heads in prayer, let us be mindful that we are covering Psalm 23, 20, I'm sorry, Psalm 32, 33, and 34 this morning. Let us pray. Father, I stretch my hands to Thee; no other help I know. If Thou withdraw Thyself from us, Lord, where shall we go? We thank You for being our early riser this morning, Lord, because it was You that touched us with Your finger of love and allowed us to wake up into time and not into eternity. Someone's alarm clock is still ringing this morning, Lord. Someone is still lying there, and they might be cold in their bed. But Father God, because of Your grace and mercy, You have allowed us to wake up, to get up, and to do Your will. So, Lord, thank You for all that You've done. Now, Father, I ask that You touch our minds and our hearts, that we might be receptive to Your Word. Thank You, Lord, for our... Problems can build us up. Our problems can make us have patience and build character and integrity in us. Our problems, God, can be blessings in disguise. And because of that, Lord, we say thank You this morning. Touch each person under the sound of My voice and allow them to know that we are witnesses for You, that it is our job to tell somebody else about our Lord and our Savior. Father, we thank You for this day. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. And those who believe, say amen, amen. As we look this morning into Psalm 32, we are finding out that, uh... We are remembering that last week, when we started Psalm 31, we said that Psalms 31 through Psalm 41, we said that they are songs, S-O-N-G-S, of deliverance and protection, uh, or direction. We said that these 11 songs from 31 to 41 are songs for refuge and protection. Whenever we find ourselves in need of God for help or for forgiveness of our sins or forgiveness of something that we have done, we find comfort in reading Psalms 31 through 41. Whenever one is in life situations seem impossible, God stands ready and able to deliver us. So Psalms 31 through 41 always take time to read them when you feel the need to be encouraged and strengthened. Let us look this morning at Psalm 32. Psalm 32 says, "Blessed is He, whose transgression is forgiven, whose sin is covered. Blessed is the man unto whom the Lord imputeth not iniquity and in whose spirit there is no guard. When I kept silent, my bones waxed old through my roaring all the day long; for day and night Thy hand was heavy upon me; my moisture is turned into the drops of summer." Say, "I acknowledged my sin unto Thee, and my integrity, my iniquity, have I not hid. I said, 'I will confess my..." really becomes the cause of our misery. The true believers' transgressions of the divine law are all forgiven. God will forgive us. He talks to us and tells us about that over and over, but He is expecting us to do better. We will sin. Psalms, uh, has told us that numerous times, that all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. So we are aware of that. But what we should strive by our reading and our praying, and our relationship with God, is that we become closer to Him so that we will sin less. We will never be sinless, free from sin, but by having a good relationship with God, by praying to Him daily, by seeking Him while He might yet be found, by staying in this Word, it will allow our minds and our hearts to focus on God. And that, again, as I stated, causes us to sin less. Amen. David tells us, uh, verse 6, "For this shall everyone that is godly pray unto Thee in a time when Thou mayest be found; surely, in the floods of great waters, they are not, uh, they shall not come nigh unto Him. Thou art My hiding place; Thou shalt preserve Me from trouble; Thou shalt come past Me about with songs of deliverance." Say, "I will instruct Thee and teach Thee in the way which Thou shalt go; I will guide Thee with mine eye." When we look back at those verses, uh, 3 to 7, we are finding out that it said, "When I kept silent, my bones waxed old." Uh, this is actually referring now to David. It is referring to him, um, how he, uh, David did, uh, was supposed to be, he should have been at war, should have been doing some things that a king should have done. But David had everything going on for him. God had blessed him above and beyond the call of duty. And in David being blessed so abundantly as he was, David became relaxed. Amen? How many of us know when things are going great, we, uh, pray a little less? When things are going really super duper looper, we sometimes don't spend as much time with God as we would when we're in a troubled situation or going through a trial. And so David, uh, became a little relaxed. And David, so he was relaxed so much to the point that he went up one night to the roof. And in going up to the roof, he looked. And when he looked, he was looking at, uh, near his neighbor. And he saw a woman at the top of the roof that was bathing. This woman's name was Bathsheba. Now, we know that when we bathe, we are not fully dressed. Amen? David looked at Bathsheba. And instead of him immediately turning and going on about his business, he continued to look. And, uh, some of you know the story, that as he looked at her, he desired Bathsheba. And when he desired her, he sent for her. Him being the king, of course, the people, uh, did as he asked. And David and Bathsheba began to see each other intimately. A little later, we found out that Bathsheba was pregnant, and now a child is on the way. So David sends for her husband, because she was married, and he was fighting in the war. David sends for him and brings him to, uh, brings him back home, because he's thinking that if Bathsheba lies with him, then he would be covered, because now we, they can say that the husband came home and she got pregnant. Well, the man was so dedicated to David the king, he was so dedicated to his country and the war, that he did not sleep with his wife. He did not want to do what other soldiers, uh, did not have the privilege of doing. So that plan did not work. So David then ordered that the husband was to go on the front line to fight the war. Many of them know that being on the front line, you were destined to be killed. And so David had the husband killed. This, of course, was sin. David is dealing with all of this. And when David is in this step, uh, David looks at, and David finds that he has sinned against God, that he is in a difficult situation now. And, uh, he has bought this sinful act upon himself, and he, uh, needs to get himself right with God. But we know that it takes quite a few chapters before David really gets himself in a repentive state to ask God's forgiveness. So David is saying right here in this verse that, um, even though that he's feeling like this, he says, uh, in verse 5, he says, "I acknowledge my sin unto Thee, and my iniquity have I not hid. I said, 'I will confess my transgressions unto the Lord,' and Thou forgavest the iniquity of my sin." And he says, "For this shall everyone that is godly pray unto Thee in a time when Thou mayest be found; surely, in the floods of great waters, they shall not come nigh unto Him." Then David tells the Lord in verse 7, "For Thou art My hiding place; Thou shalt preserve Me from trouble; Thou shalt come past Me about with songs of deliverance." Now, we find out that when David believes that God is forgiving him or has forgiven him, David now begins to turn his attention from seeking the deliverance and the forgiveness of God, and David begins to instruct. That's where verse 8 comes in. "I will instruct Thee and teach Thee in the way which Thou shalt go; I will guide Thee with mine eye. Be ye not as the horse or as the mule, which have no understanding, whose mouth must be held in with bit and brittle, lest they come near unto Thee; many sorrows shall be to the wicked; but he that trusted in the Lord shall mercy come past him about. Be glad in the Lord, and rejoice, ye righteous; and shout for joy, all ye that are upright in heart." So David is realizing that God is teaching by His Word, and He guides, even the secret, the Lord will guide. David gives a word of caution, though, to the sinners, and he lets them know, excuse me, that the reason for this caution is that the way of sin will certainly end in sorrow. Beloveds, we will reap what we sow. And so he says, as a word of comfort to the saints, just know that to rejoice in the Lord, to rejoice in the Lord and in His salvation, and to give Him the praise. We know that James 5 and 11 tells, 5 and 16 tells us to confess our faults one to another and pray for one another, that ye may be healed. The effectual fervent prayer of a righteous man availeth much. Let us look at, uh, Psalm 33. Psalm 33 starts out by saying, "Rejoice in the Lord, all ye righteous; for praise is comely for the upright. Praise the Lord with heart; sing unto Him with the psaltry and an instrument of tin strings; sing unto Him a new song; play skillfully with a loud noise; for the word of the Lord is right, and all His works are done in truth." David is telling the people to just rejoice in the Lord, to just do it and praise Him, uh, upright, praising on the instruments and praising with your voice. Just give God the glory and the honor. And it says in verse 5, "He loveth righteousness and judgment; the earth is full of goodness of the Lord; by the word of the Lord were the heavens made, and all the hosts of them by the breath of His mouth. He gathereth the waters of the sea together as a heap; He layeth up the deep in store houses. Let all the earth fear the Lord; let all the inhabitants of the world stand in awe of Him; for He spake, and it was done; He commanded, and it stood fast." Who wouldn't serve a God like this? Amen? "The Lord bringeth the counsel of the heathen to note; be he maketh the devices of the people of none effect; the counsel of the Lord standeth forever, the thoughts of His heart to all generations." You see, from verses 1 through 11, holy joy is in the heart and soul of praise. And that is here pressed upon the righteous. Thankful praise is the breath and language of holy joy. Religious songs are proper expressions of thankful praises. Every endowment we possess should be employed with all our skill and earnestness in God's service. His promises are all wise and good. His Word is right, and therefore, we are only in the right when we agree with the Word of God. Verse 12 says, "Blessed is the nation, whose God is the Lord, and the people whom He has chosen for His own inheritance. The Lord looketh from heaven; He betholeth all the sons of men from the plates of His habitation; uh, He, uh, He looketh upon all the inhabitants of the earth; He fashioned their hearts alike; He considereth all their works. There is no king saved by the multitude of hosts; a mighty man is not delivered by much strength. A horse is a vain thing." He uses the example of the horse again, as he did in Psalm 32. "A horse is a vain thing for safety; neither shall he deliver any by his great strength. Behold, the eye of the Lord is upon them that fear Him, upon them that hope in His mercy, to deliver their soul from death and to keep them alive in famine. Our soul waited for the Lord; He is our help and our shield; for our heart shall rejoice in Him, because we have trusted in His holy name." Hallelujah. There is a name above all name, and we need to remember to trust in the Lord, because at the name of Jesus, every knee shall bow and every tongue shall confess. Verse 22 says, "Let thy mercy, O Lord, be upon us, according as we hope in Thee. Let it be according as we hope in Thee." You see, in Psalm 33, verses 12 through 22, "All the motions and operations of the souls of men, which no mortals know but themselves, God knows better than they do; their hearts as well as their times are all in His hand. He formed the spirit of each man within him." God, God has done this. He has formed the spirit of each man within him. Now, all the powers of the creature depend upon him and are of no account, of no avail at all without him. In other words, we need the Lord. We need Him every day of our lives. We need Him to walk with us and talk with us. We need Him to comfort us. We need the Lord to lead and direct us, to order our steps in His Word. And He does that as we read this Word and research this Word. Each and every day, we have new mercies that will show us and lead us and guide us and direct us in the path of righteousness. I'm so glad that God is the one that we should follow and that He certainly is leading and guiding us. We need to know that if we make God's favor sure towards us, then we need not fear whatever is against us. We have to be mindful that no weapon formed against us shall prosper. If we make it, uh, we are to give to Him the glory of His special grace. "All human devices, for the salvation of our souls are vain; but the Lord's watchful eye is over those whose conscientious fear of His name proceeds from a believing hope in His mercy." In difficult times, the Lord will. The Lord has helped us. In difficult times, we can go to Him, and He will order our steps. As we conclude today with Psalm 34, this Psalm is a very, very, very familiar Psalm. This Psalm 34, uh, and as we are beginning to look at this, most of us that are listening today have heard, most of us, at some point or time, this very, very renowned scripture, Psalm 34 and 1. "I will bless the Lord at all times; His praise shall continually be in my mind; my soul shall make her boast in the Lord; the humble shall hear their oath and be glad." Verse 3, "Oh, magnify the Lord with me, and let us exalt His name together." Then verse 4, 5, and 6 says, "I sought the Lord, and He heard me and delivered me from all my fears. They looked unto Him and were lighted; and their faces were not ashamed." Verse 6 says, "This poor man cried, and the Lord heard him and saved him out of all of his troubles; the angel of the Lord encamped round about them that feared Him and delivered Him." And before we get into verse 8, I just want to give you a little background on Psalm 34. You see, when Psalm 34 comes into existence, David is on the run from Saul, who is the current king, or who was at that time, the current king of Israel. David's on the run. David was trying desperately to escape from Saul's murderous hunt for his life. David fled to a camp. He thought he was going to go to Gath, but he had forgotten at the time that Camp Gath was the place where Goliath, the king, that he had killed years back, that's where he lived. And the people there loved Goliath. So when David goes into this camp, because his name was so renowned and went all over, people began to recognize David. And in recognizing David, they sent word back to the king, to King Abalich of Gath, uh, whose real name is Ashish, Akish. And, and so when they told Akish, the king of Israel then, when they, I mean, I'm sorry, the king of Gath, that David was there in the town, of course, he sent the soldiers to trap David and to bring him there to him. They had put David in jail. David was nervous. David was scared. David was scared. And so David says in verse 4, "I sought the Lord, and He heard me and delivered me from all my fears." Let me tell you how the Lord delivered David. What, when David was entrapped, David then was thinking, "What can I do to get out of here? What can I do so they will not kill me?" David began to drool at the mouth, and David began to scratch on various things and acting as if he had lost his mind. The king thought, "Oh, no, I've got enough crazy people here in my camp, so I'm going to let David go free." And David was let go. So David is saying right now, uh, you know, "I sought the Lord; He heard me; He delivered me from all of my fears." And then he said, "Uh, 'The angel of the Lord encamped round about them that feared Him and delivered Him.'" David is so happy about his deliverance. David says, "Old Tates, and see that the Lord is good; blessed is the man that trusteth in Him. Oh, fear the Lord, ye His saints; for there is no want to them that fear Him. The young lions do lack and suffer hunger; but they that seek the Lord shall not want any good thing. Come, ye children, hearken unto Me; I will teach you the fear of the Lord." He's so glad to be released. He's saying, "Come on, everybody, I'm gonna teach you how to really love the Lord." And then he tells them, "What man is he that desires life and loveth many days, that he may see good? Keep thy tongue from evil," he's teaching now, "and thy lips from speaking guile." He's telling them, that's the first thing, keep your tongue from evil and your lips from God. Secondly, he tells them in verse 14, "Depart from evil and do good." Then he tells them, "Seek peace and pursue it." Then he says that the eyes of the Lord are upon the righteous, and its ears are upon, are open unto their crime. He says, "The face of the Lord is against them that do evil, to cut off the remembrance of them from the earth." Verse 17, he says, "The righteous cry, and the Lord heareth and delivers them out of all their troubles." Then David goes on and says, "The Lord is nigh unto Thee, that are of a..." that are of a broken heart, and save it such as be of a contrite spirit. Many are the afflictions of the righteous. But listen, David has learned in verse nineteen, but the Lord delivered him out of them all. He keepeth all his bones; not one of them is broken. Evil shall slay the wicked, and they that hate the righteous shall be desolate. He's saying after all that he's gone through, he was afraid for his life. He thought king, uh, the king of Gath was going to actually kill him. But the Lord delivered him. He didn't have a broken bone in his body. It was God that kept him. He begins to praise God for all that he has done. And he ends by saying, the Lord redeemeth the soul of the servant; and none of them that trust in him shall be desolate. Hallelujah! If we just trust in God, if we keep the faith today, beloved, if we turn to just uh, praising God and teaching others about the love of God, guess what? He is going to take care of us. He's going to redeem the soul of his servants. And we will trust him and we shall never, ever be desolate. The Lord, if we are living for him, if we're doing what he tells us to do, the word of God says, he will give us even the desires of our hearts. May God bless you today. Don't walk around with your head down. Hold your head up. Hold your head up. Look up to those hills with which cometh your health. And know that your health cometh from the Lord. It's not as bad as you think it is because we serve a God who is able to do exceedingly above and abundantly, who's able to bless us in our mess. He's able to comfort us and he's able to keep us. Therefore, we should say, I will bless the Lord at all times; his praise shall continually be in my mind. God bless you. Psalms today, we're going to cover it next week. Psalms thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven. May the peace, grace, and mercy of God may it bless you. Hold your head up. You have nothing to look down for. God is still on the throne. See you Sunday. We're back to eleven o'clock on this Sunday. We will see you Sunday, Facebook Live, from eleven to eleven-thirty. God bless you.